Clark, Stephen, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament, Mayor Lumber.
Here. We need a motion to approve the agenda. I would like to make a official statement.
You don't have 24-hour notice.
Oh, we can have that.
Yep.
Motion approved agenda. Second. Motion second to approve the agenda is presented. All those in favor, some present their eyes. Close, all in care. People in the public who would like to address the school or now. City Council, hold on that.
That'd be me.
Mr. Park.
Chuck Parsons, 600 North Yellowstone. The mayor said I had to keep my comments to a half hour, so I'll do my best. I'm here tonight representing two of your partner organizations, the Brandon Development Foundation and the Brandon Valley Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm the current chair of both organizations. With the Development Foundation, we're fortunate enough to cut our ask in half from last year. That's due to us selling parcels of land and then interest rates going down, so our ask this year will be 50,000. Can't promise you that next year it might not go up depending what rates do and land sales and whatnot, but we're fortunate this year we can do that. I would remind you, though, that with that decrease in the ask, we're going to need your help on that course and rail crossing. Hopefully, we have the engineer's estimate to you by the next council meeting. You all see that there's hundreds of employees that are impacted out there by that crossing. And Dennis and I met with one of our state legislators this week, and he confirmed through G O E D, there's no assistance from the state we're going to get in no uncertain terms, so we're just, we're stuck there. So, but we're fortunate enough to cut that ask in half. And on the Chamber of Commerce, I sent you all an email, had letters attached to it, outlined what we're using the funds for, you know, especially with the Facebook, social media stuff that we've been doing, and I think we've been very successful with that in the last year. And then, just to recap, you know, we did that COVID-19 business support campaign, which went well. We started doing coffee with the council. We stopped doing that, but I guess I'd leave it up to you guys when you want to start that up again. We'd be ready to do that, depending on what you say, so. And then, just to recap, we did that annual appreciation mixer, we did the McCarty movie nights, the Inside Brandon publication. And as I said, we're just going to work hard to be a good partner with the city. I've got backup with me tonight. Brian Willis is our past chair. Amanda Starzil will be the chair next year, so if you have questions for any of us regarding any of that, we'll be here for a little bit, but again, we'd hope that we, you can do that ask that we did of that 75,000, so, thank you.
Any questions on behalf of the council for Chuck or chamber members? We'll be going over that with the regular budget as we go through it. Chuck wanted to just be present and heard on behalf of the chamber and the Development Council. So with that, we'll move into our budget work session. Brian, you want to take over where you left off?
We left off with the executive mayor budget. No major changes.
Give me a page number.
Page 14. Moving on to page 15. Page 15, starting with the city administrator. Couple of things. One, the CPI for all urban consumers is .6% as of June, so that's factored into the wage adjustments.
Six, .6 or 1.6?
.6.
.6, okay.
Everything was increased, I think, in February, it was over 2, and then fuel prices dropped dramatically, so it was hovering around zero.
So you could just use the, which one do you use?
.6.
But I mean, which?
June.
CBI.
CBI, June. All urban consumers. And then for health and life insurance, that grade outnumber, some changes in it. We reduced the inquiry percentage increase down to a 6% renewal change. And as we go through that budget for health insurance, so that's the base change, and there's some other changes in there with coverage changes. Either employees changing from, say, single to single or employee spouse, or moving from employee spouse to family, as well as any potential hires, new replay, or new staff.
Is that one comes out to be 12.6, so that's due to changes in coverage?
Nope, nope. Let me take a look.
Well, I'm, so maybe I'm calculating this stuff wrong. So I'm just looking at the budget from 2020, so this year versus what we're asking for for 2021. So are you saying that that should be, that's what you were basing the 6% on, or what am I doing wrong?
No, I got the same thing. The administration, and there's a couple of other ones that came out of 13, but some of them came down at seven or eight.
Parks is 40.
Coverage changes there.
Coverage change. Yep. Will you take a look and make sure that those, that number's correct?
Well, we were going to look at the gross number anyway. I think we're under that by each department, so I'll, I'll just keep those comments to myself because they're all over the place.
Yeah, so that was, that was the number that we used to come up with that revised number in that adopted column. Otherwise, not anticipate anything huge. HR services contract goes up the same as wages, .6%. Planning and zoning, we're not making, or not proposing any changes to the per meeting cost unless the council would like to modify that from 40 up to something else, or down. It's up to you. Same thing with the park committee. Page 16, we are anticipating an election for next year. Hopefully, a little bit less disruptive than this year. Or two, yeah. We've got 55,000 in for the audits. We will probably end up doing a, or that's, oh, that's legal. 55,000 for legal, never mind. Finance.
So in 2019, we went over on legal, but that was an unusual year.
Yeah, both 18 and 19.
We had 55,000 budget.
Yep.
Hopefully, get that back to me.
Yeah, the four-year average is right at 55, so. Finance, nothing huge.
What do we do for software?
That's all of our financial software that runs the city, along with.
Like our C, like our, like the city?
Yeah, along with anywhere from computer software to all of that kind of goes in there.
Page 17, insurance.
How come this one's built up so much?
Projects.
Like, what do you mean?
The construction projects, what we're doing.
At all, we don't allocate it out to projects.
No.
But all.
Yep.
This is like 56% from 2019.
Yeah, they'd called me and warned me that we were going to have a pretty hefty bump as, as we go through and I break down all of the financial information for the insurance folks. We give them the total budget, and then they want to break out the police departments, they want to break out, I think it's water, and then they want to break out all of the capital items and any projects that we're doing. And then they multiply those by a different factor than our normal liability coverage.
And then we run that through that quasi-governmental.
Yeah, through the Public Assurance Alliance.
So I mean, they've got to be giving us the best price.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're kind of stuck in a position.
Yep.
We're, I was going to look and see if my computers light up, but we're over budget this year because of the projects and stuff, so.
I think we saw, I think it was a $23,000 bump.
Yeah.
If I remember right.
Cool.
Now, we're to the audit. Professional services, no major changes.
It's an uptick because we'll have a federal audit next year.
Well, yeah, it's, is, I can't think of the guy's name.
Guam.
So from 2019 to this year, it's 25%, so is it because of the federal?
Yeah, I mean, the, the regular audit's going to be 25,500 this year, I think it's 25,700 next year, and then we'll have a federal audit on there. We haven't had a federal audit for years. I will email them to double verify if they know how much more it's going to cost, but it'll cost more with a federal audit.
Who says we have to have that?
If you get more than $750,000 in federal funds, you have to have a federal audit.
You get to come and go until it. Man.
Since we're anticipating getting more than 750 in federal hours.
General government buildings, a big change in there originally from request, there's a half a million dollars for design on a building, whether it's a public workshop or city hall, municipal building, took that out.
Oh, can you shut that off, Chuck, please?
So the repairs to city hall, that would be, we've added budget before, but we haven't spent.
We haven't, but I know this year the, the brick guy's finally coming to patch the brick wall in the back.
Well, it got hit by the contractor.
Well, this one was, but at city hall.
Oh, oh, okay.
So they're going to look at that. We do usual annual inspections or biannual inspections on the roofs, so, and this, that covers all of the buildings in town, not just city hall and council chambers, but the food pantry, typically the shops. So we haven't used it, but I could see us using some more.
Was parking lot probably this?
No. Nope.
So the 500 is either for the public works building or city hall, or you think you can get both of those designed?
They took it out.
Took it out.
They took it out.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't.
Down the road.
That's one way to put it.
So whose wages fall under this category?
Janitor. Change there, the biggest change anyway. Couple of changes. We'd like to have the intern a little bit longer for next year, and then we also want to increase our testing capabilities primarily with new subdivisions.
Testing.
Density testing for streets, televising, et cetera. We would, we would prefer to pay for those because then there's no conflict as if the contractor's paying it, the developer's paying it, or we're paying for it. We'd rather pay for it than it's ours, so we know that the firm performing the duties are working for us and not the developer.
So what type of testing?
Compaction testing primarily.
Okay.
Is what we do.
What kind of computer are we getting for two grand?
Just a regular, replacing out one of the computers.
Oh, like a desktop?
Yeah.
Okay, I was thinking more laptop prices on like two grand.
Page 19, police administration. Included in the original request was for a full-time detective and then backfilling with a new patrol officer. Joe can certainly speak to that much more than I can, if you want to.
I would like to ask him to speak, and then I also would like us to revisit the wages because we had talked at our June 1st meeting about doing a quick update on our wage study. So we're three months down the road because we realized there was a large deficit with our patrol officers. But before Joe speaks, I'll just make the comment that I absolutely support putting the detective position back in. To me, our, our highest priorities need to be infrastructure and public safety, and as I understand it, towns the size of 4,000 on up, it's, it's kind of unheard of not to have a detective. So I'll turn it over to Joe.
Yeah, I prefer to pause with the guidance to page, like, I won't bother reading to you, but I do feel strongly that the city of Brandon needs a full-time dedicated detective position. We aren't seeing a big huge spike in criminal acts, it's fairly consistent. We remain in a very safe.
Safe community with relatively low crime stats. However, I think that it's going to take us about two years to get a detective fully trained, and when we investigate matters now, it's either done by patrol officers or when Lee is doing it, because he's kind of our quasi-hybrid detective, a lot of times he'll be doing subject interviews or victim interviews, and he gets called away for various calls, people wanting to check well-being, or, you know, we try to deter or put off dog calls or things like that, but he'll get basically distracted to other minor calls, and it really impedes our ability to properly conduct investigations. And we do have the occasional serious crime, much like we had this stabbing allegation the other day, and those kind of things where you have a dedicated detective that's building rapport with victims, building rapport with subjects, we can't have him, you know, being broken away for some other minor call that has to be addressed to appease the public. And I feel strongly that this detective position is something that Brandon needs. T is adding a detective position. They're a town about half our populace. They're increasing their staffing from eight to either 10 or 11, that's in consideration right now, and they will have a detective at the end of the year. That means that there will be only us over 4,000 that doesn't have a detective in the state of South Dakota, and I think that is grossly inadequate, and I hang my hat on it's kind of one of those overhead positions that you have to do at the populace that we're at. We have to have that overhead.
Just the, he puts the total ticket for that position.
I figured out total with, with Benny's, between 73 and 75,000.
I guess I'm in support of that. I mean, if chief says we need one, and I understand why we would need one, I say, let's make it happen.
Is that in addition to the 845 we already have right now?
You have basically go back to that first column.
895, so 50,000 in wages, about 3825 in FICA, four grand in, in retirement, 1250 in workers' comp, and then about 14,000 in health and life insurance.
Speaking of that, again, I know Bart brought it up, luckily, I think we have more questions on that, but the increase from the budget in 2020 goes from 192 up to 275, that's about 30-some percent.
Yeah, we've got a number of changes in plans. We've got one, two, three changes, one from single to family, one from single to plus child, one, another one from single to family, so we've got about 32, about $40,000 in plan changes.
And how do those, the changes, how do those broke out to the, to the individual?
They'd be paying 5%.
And just in comparison to other communities, and when we talked about wages a couple of years ago, for those of you that were here, you might remember, I had brought up a comparison. There was a police management study, and it compares us per capita spending with the population to other communities of similar size, and I guess I just wanted to say that study information has not changed. We still very, very much underspend compared to, to other communities of similar size. I mean, there's, there's communities that are our size that are spending per capita twice as much as, as we are on our police department, and, you know, Brandon's always thought of being the best, and this is not an area where I would not want to be not the best, and I think we should definitely be proactive and moving forward to make steps in the right direction.
In support of that, D C I does a survey every two years, and they report the budgets for the police departments throughout the state, and I've highlighted a lot of cities of like size, most smaller and larger than Brandon, and we are significantly lower than all of them that are within 2,000 to 3,000 of our populace base, and it's actually quite significant difference in their overall budget, so we're still getting a lot.
Is it taking into consideration wages only or wages and benefits too?
Their, their entire budget.
Okay.
I can, just looking at some.
Careful with that.
This here, I guess, I can see why some communities are higher than, lower than others in our, let's say, range. Our close proximity to Sioux Falls seems to have some effect. One I was looking for and I don't see is Harrisburg, you know off the top of your head?
I do not.
Some of the other ones, I mean, like, Vermillion has a similar budget, but that being a college town, I can see them, actually, they have a higher budget, I should say, but that being, like I said, being a college town, yeah, I can see that.
Of course, that doesn't include the university police budget as well, which is a separate budget.
Yeah, I did, I did see that. The books have, the universities have their own budget. Don't give your own, not against this, not against it, but I don't think it's necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison in a lot of cases.
Well, it never is, but Mole Bridge is $321.79 a person, and, you know, Brandon, for instance, $144.47, less than half.
I think for myself, I see why our budget, I mean, just because of sales tax, we don't have maybe the budget like some other departments, but I feel like when our chief comes to us and says we need a detective, we need a detective. I guess that's just, I feel like, Dave, what do you think? You have years of experience in this.
Yeah, I can, I can support it. What, what kind of shift are you anticipating for this individual?
The individual's going to be subject to a lot of callouts, obviously, because they're going to spearhead almost all of our investigations, but it'll probably be, you know, maximized to spread over a number of days, like five days a week, where currently it's four.
At least currently working four?
Yeah, but he, you know, to calls as well, so he's in uniform.
How about another vehicle?
Yeah, that, that will eventually have to be a call. We're talking about right now using the Tahoe.
Where are you going to house it? I mean, we're sat, the whole last meeting talking about facilities. Is there any place?
I'm, I'm looking at combining the sergeants into one office. They work opposing shifts anyway, so I can consolidate them into one office and make the second sergeant office and detective office. Then he'll just have to conduct his interviews there.
That makes sense.
Can we, can we defer the vehicle?
Yes, I can use the Tahoe for at least a year.
You've got a vehicle in the question.
No, we cannot. We, the current vehicle's got like 82, 83,000 miles on it, the one that it's scheduled to replace in this budget, and by the time, the time goes by, it'll have over 100,000, and I'm seeing that basically once these vehicles 100,000, they are cost prohibitive to maintain.
Anything else?
Where are we at on the wage study?
Not completed yet. Julie, we talked to her last week. She's starting to plug some things in to a scale.
We have like an ETA on this? I mean, I feel like we've talked, we've kicked this around for years, and we asked for it three months ago.
I'll, I'll ask where she's at.
Can we do more than that? I mean, can we ask her to have it done in a couple of weeks? Because we, I mean, we literally talked about it's a recent study, and we just need to do a quick update.
I'll ask her.
So do we get the detective or no?
Yeah, we can, as we go through this, we can certainly make those changes. We'll, we'll plug that number in.
And see what we can do? I know, obviously, it's going to come somewhere, but just kind of curious if.
Yep. I've got notes to put it back in.
I hate to bring this up, like, the office update. I'm just trying to squeeze a little bit here.
An office update is that we're not going to get a new building. I wanted to build a squatter, expand a little bit where there's a separate eating area. Right now, a lot of officers process evidence on their desk, and then they turn on the elevator, they eat on it, and I'm going to set up a separate eating area and update that up.
So is there any place here if the detective is very important, is there any place here that we can make any change?
You can take my safety count. I know it's only a thousand.
I'm just, you know.
I raised some money, so I'm good, but.
We have to ask the question because, you know, there's only so much, so.
I believe this is a very bold budget, and I don't see an area where this is bad.
Thank you, Steve.
We've got proposals.
turns.
Thanks, Steve.
We've got proposed in there a stipend for officers for cell phones, they all don't have city-issued cell phones, but as we all know, cell phones are getting used more and more, that's thirty-five dollars a month for the officers, which we pay for basically a lot.
So they don't have cell phones?
They have their own personal cell phones, but they don't have city-issued cell phones.
So they, so they can use our own, and then do we have like a program that, like based, I mean, if we need to look at their records that we have their records?
Yeah, there'd be a policy in place that, that if you accept the stipend, we have access to your phone.
If need be, yeah.
If needed, yeah.
Okay, just curious, I don't.
We don't, we don't have it typed up yet, because we don't do the stipend yet, it's something new.
Yeah.
We just have city-issued cell phones to certain employees.
Yeah.
And if we add it here, we'll offer it to?
Everybody.
Everybody.
That needs a.
Yep.
That needs one.
That would need a cell phone, right?
Yeah.
So Brian, go high tech.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not correct, ready to make that leap.
You, you like your flip, I understand.
Auto service, I did, I did cut that fuel budget by five, because we haven't, you know, we haven't hit it lately, I know what's going to happen, gas is going to go up to four and a half bucks a gallon after this budget goes into effect, I know what's going to happen, so sorry, but with the fuel-efficient vehicles that we've got now.
And mileage, are you good on those?
I'll scan, it's been incredible.
Just outstanding, that's, that's.
I have a count, I haven't worked for a week, David, I've got it, exactly, the island I've saved, the significance of Chazal, Kixwa, all that, so it's a significant difference to patrol, state patrol saying that they just made 40% savings.
So one of my concerns is, and don't take it personally, so that's a 12% increase in the police budget for the year, for, from 2020 to 2021, plus my math, so just so we know where we're at.
But some.
Without any increases in any way.
But benefits, because we have that kind of crazy setup where people come in and they pay, so a lot of that is because of our systems, not because police are buying a bunch of shiny new badges.
Fire department, we bumped those, they're, they're to, the ONM and their equipment budget up by the same rate as the property tax levy, so it's 4.8%.
Like, does that ever, like, do we ever cap that?
We don't.
Haven't.
I mean, how many, how many fire departments? Up 22% from, I don't know.
Fifty, that's the ambulance.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, just, just looking at it, typically, a first-line pumper is a fir, a pumper's a first-line vehicle for about fifteen years, twenty maybe, I don't think we stretch it that far, then it serves as a backup pumper for probably another ten to fifteen years, and you're run-of-the-mill pumper, half a million to start, and then it goes up from there, and there's at least two pumpers, plus there's wildland units, equipment truck, et cetera. So their equipment, their equipment and ONM stuff isn't really too far out of line.
Well, it costs us a heck of a lot more than our department.
Yeah, that, that 240,000 that we pay currently would probably just be wages.
Yeah.
Page 21, building inspections, no major things there, the only things are the, the wage adjustment and insurance actually went down.
Yeah, there's some like way, 45%, so there must be a change.
We had anticipated somebody adding on this year, and he chose not to, so.
Do the grease trap inspections, wouldn't that fall under salary, so are those for supplies?
Different supplies, I don't know what else she needs, anything they would need for her.
Traffic, seventy-five thousand in there to finish the transportation plan, twenty-five thousand in there for some additional, our new controllers, and then five grand for batteries.
For traffic lights, though?
Yeah. Page 22, highway and street administration, not proposing any equipment, there's the big change, not looking at a truck.
Got a lot of work for part ten, what do you?
Yep, yep, what'd you have, two this year?
At, uh.
Three?
At one point, we had three.
Yeah, so as we, as we move along, we're getting to that point that during the summer months, we probably need more assistance, you know, if we're looking at primarily storm sewers and, and doing much more maintenance on storm sewers, we're going to need some additional staff, but during the winter time, depending on the snow, we're not quite ready to go a full-timer.
And what's the, I see, the increase is about 20% give or take?
Yep, for insurance.
What's that?
For.
What's the difference?
For health insurance, change of plan.
Change of plan.
Got somebody from going from employee spouse to family, I think is what it is.
Doesn't matter if they're employee only, or, or family, you still only pay 5%.
Correct.
That's, that's the January 1st, right now, they don't pay anything, January 1st, they'll pay 5%.
Well, that's sweet. Does that go up every year, or how does that work?
It hasn't, the, the 5% contribution by employees is something new, effective January 1st.
Good.
Paved streets, nothing major there, although we might need to take a look at that Corson Railroad crossing, plug that in there, once we get a, a number.
Should be good.
Yeah. Snow removal, it's always a guess, I used to say that, but nothing, nothing major, looking at purchasing a plow, you know, the contract, the snow removal number all depends on how much snow we get, it's going to be up or down.
But you could pretty much go off of the averages over the years.
Yep, we do.
And that's, if the four-year average is 7,800, going to 18,000. Seems like plenty.
Oh, yeah, yep.
I mean, I can see going up over the average, but I think even our high mark was what, 12, 12.8 back in 2016?
Mm-hmm.
Other people's thoughts?
Same guy.
They're not taking, you know, a couple thousand dollars, four, five thousand dollars here, there.
Yeah, you mean the high, are you looking at higher than yours?
Yeah.
Not the total, okay, I was looking at the total.
Eighteen, about what you normally throw in there, or is it just?
Yeah, I think it was 16 for a while. We can cer, we can certainly.
But we've never done it, it was like 12 of a hundred.
Put it at 10 and what?
Yeah, we can certainly make it down, quite frankly, if it's a snow year and we exceed that, we're going to exceed it.
We'll jinx ourselves, put it at 10, and we'll jinx ourselves.
Yep.
Sorry, Raleigh.
We've got enough money to hire a contractor. We've lowered something to do.
Bottom line, if it's snowing, we're going to have a contractor here.
Yeah, well, yeah, that would need that. Storm drainage, we want to do that rate study for stormwater utility, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars in repairs or, or maintenance on, on drainage ways, and then another 50,000 to install a sump pump collection system out on Chestnut.
So this is new, right?
Yep. And then.
Sump pump, sump pump collection.
Keeps it from going into the street, takes it and puts it into the storm sewer.
Yeah, we've got a number of sump pumps that run on Spring Place, which is that, those townhouses just north of the Mormon church, and they pump out onto their backyards, which crosses the sidewalk, which creates some algae and slime issues, and then it makes its way into behind the curb, so we'd like to put in a sump pump collection system that runs from Rochelle North to collect all that before it crosses the sidewalk. And then we briefly discussed, we've got a, a storm sewer down in the Big Sioux Rec area that's causing some issues, it's collapsing, we'd be looking at doing design in 2021 with construction in 2022.
I'm sorry, hip, take me through that again, I, either I forgot, or I didn't quite grasp it, Raleigh, can you come in the podium and take us through that again? I know you did, but you might have to do it in more simple terms for me to understand.
So the storms, the storm sewer that is in question here is the one that runs down into the Big Sioux Recreational Park, and I can't remember exactly what the footage was, it's a pretty lengthy storm sewer, though. Well, we had it camered, and, yeah, we've had it camered, and where it ends up, we had concerns with it where it actually dumped into the river, because there's a manhole that's sticking out of the ground from the flooding in the past years, there's a manhole that's sticking out of the ground, probably eight to 10 feet, and the pipe on either side of it is starting to come apart, being moved, so when we camered it, they could only get in 400, and I want to say it was 450 to 550 feet, and the top of the pipe is actually caving in, so it's, it's blocking, right now, it's blocked, he couldn't go any further, so that's, he had to stop, and there's no access to that line, so I know Tammy had talked to, we had a meeting with state park people, kind of talked about building some type of a detention pond, instead of shifting it all to the river to help clean it up a little better, so that's where this design's going to come into play, I think, so.
That's where it drops off, I think.
It starts on Parkview and Ponderosa, anything that's in that area that's tied to it, it goes straight down through the park right there.
It's on that path, right?
It goes in, yeah, it goes in there, and then it kind of makes a little bit of a right turn to go down towards the, the Big Sioux River.
What about the detention pot?
Uh, when we talked to the parks people, we'd move it back in, there's one area, I can't remember exact footages, but it was, it's down in the park itself, and.
Would be at the state park.
Right, right, and they were kind of in favor of it, you know, as long as it's maintained and stuff, so.
So it's our responsibility, not theirs?
Yeah.
So what's the 800,000 for?
That's for construction of it.
That's what they originally reflected, and it's dropped down to design.
So you're dropping it down to the design?
Just design, it's about, a little over, looking on GIS, it's about 600 feet worth of pipe, from Parkview down to where it daylights next to the river.
Raleigh, is it possible to put a sleeve in the cover?
No, we're going to have to dig it up anyways, just to get it, get to it, there's angles that, where it turns, there's angled pipe in there, so I don't know how you would sleeve that, the other issue is with it collapsing on the top of the pipe, it's actually structurally unsafe, so, I mean, if it decides it's going to go, I don't know what, how much fills on top of it, but.
Part of where those sleeves do work, though, is they can.
Are you talking like lining it?
Yeah.
Lining it's all right, but if it's got that major of a structural defect, it won't work, you're wasting your money, you'd be better off to dig up.
I'll argue with you on that one.
You'd, you'd have to, you'd have to dig it up to be able to install it, too, so.
But if it's got any curves and stuff like that, it would be difficult to get that.
There's, there's, I think, at least two turns that I saw in the distance that they went on the video.
Does the whole thing need to be replaced, the entire 600, some feet?
Well, that's why we're saying, we're trying to, the piece that comes to the Big Sioux River, Tammy thought maybe we just take that back and make some type of retention pond there to help keep it cleaner water, so we're not dumping everything off the street right directly into the river, so that's when we talked with the state park people, and like I say, they were more than willing to go and, go in with that, so.
What kind of steps would you have to go through with, or wouldn't you have to with DER, other entities like that, to get something like that approved?
Right now, we're not under the jurisdiction of the MS4, but we're getting close, because it's based on population.
At a, at a minimum, we'll have to have an easement from GFMP, which I don't think we currently have, this wood pipe.
So how long ago did we build that?
We didn't build it, I don't think, it was built by the developer that developed that part of the town.
Through the state park?
Yep.
Without their permission?
Well, I would assume that he got it somewhere, but we don't.
Well, it wasn't that developed, it was built by.
So you're saying if we, if we could go where the line is already broken and install some sort of pond, then we wouldn't have to do 600 feet or maybe?
Roughly, yeah, you'd be cutting off the length of the pipe you have to replace, but there's some issues at the beginning, too, where maybe that's an idea to maybe try and line the very beginning part, but if you're going to do that, we probably should have some access points added, which means installing some manholes, so you're still going to increase your costs that way, too, then, so. But yeah, it would pull it, it would pull it in from the river, they have a, they had a place that Tammy and, I think it was Confluence, had looked at a pond size and everything to do that, and they kind of had it laid out, and we showed it to the GFMP, so.
If you're willing, that makes more sense, it's not necessarily.
Keeps it cleaner, more maintenance, but keeps it cleaner.
Job security.
Yeah, I need that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Raleigh. So that's just design, as we go through the design, we could take, certainly take a look at lining it, or the pond concept, if GFMP is open to that, or just replacing the entire, the entire thing, it's a fairly compact working area in between the lift station and the house to the south, there's not much room in there. Sidewalks and crosswalk.
Since we haven't had any, many deducts that I've heard about from this council, you might look at that zero escaping line item, and you're going to need some, you can't add and not take anything away here, folks.
So, yeah, I think I know what zero escaping is.
It's, it's.
Swing, please?
It'll take a while.
It's a different way of handling runoff, trying to contain runoff onto the individual properties, typically, you're looking to have bioswales or small retain, or rain gardens, small retention ponds.
It's a, it's a way of not shedding as much water off onto the streets and retaining more water inside the property, therefore causing water to actually infiltrate groundwater versus just dumping into the river.
Not tall grass drainage.
Now, zero escaping itself is actually a more water-conscious way of landscaping.
Yeah, different types of plants.
So where would the city spend the 50 grand?
Well, we've got some, a couple of projects that we've talked about for a while, the golf course, what we would like to do is if we get into the zero escaping, we would like a couple of showplaces that people can drive by and see, so the golf course would make, make sense, we've talked about doing something along the, the parking lot before it gets to the ditch, because there's a continual maintenance headache as city roads, parking lot, so we could take a look at that, Tammy and I have started talking about some zero escaping along Holly, if you haven't noticed, anytime there's any lack of water, Holly dries up and, and turns into a weed bed, as well as those trees in there die, and we've looked at it, we've done some remediation to it a few years ago to try to improve the soil content, it didn't really do much, so we'd be looking at maybe some zero escaping along Holly to wonderful showcase.
And then also on the corner of Sioux and Maple, where that lift station is, or wherever, there's that swale through there, trying to, again, like Brian said, at some point showcase some of this landscaping, because we think, one of them is water conservation, too, from that angle, we think our residents, our young people would be really receptive to zero escaping, but we'd like to. But we'd like to have someplace where there's a project that they could look at. So Alliance has done it in front of their building. They created a, I don't know what you call it.
Sort of rain garden.
It's a rain garden type, yeah.
So basically in the front quarter of Alliance where there's all those rocks, there's, it's actually a retention pond. Underneath that, it's a, it's a collection system that takes the water in and then infiltrates it into the ground versus just storing a pond with water. Like most developments, you see ponds with water, they have to put an aerator in it so that it doesn't collect mosquitoes, whatever, so.
I think, I think it sounds nice, but to be honest, I feel like if that's something, I'd be in favor of cutting for a year. I mean, public.
Here's my, here's my point. Uh, we are not at a level in this city where we can have just $50,000 holding items. If we come up with something that's reasonable and, and we can do it, we have two or three years that we haven't spent a dime. Take it out of fund balance when you come up with that proposal. But we can't have a, a holding pond of $50,000 for something that we probably are never gonna get done this year.
Yep.
But I'm, if we can come up with a plan, like, uh, Maple and Sioux or wherever that we have a great thing, that's present it and then we take it out of fund balance and just make an adjustment there.
And couldn't we, uh, well, say this, highly recommend to, to different developers and or, um, construction projects that they incorporate some of the.
That's what, that's why we're trying to get some showcases, so that we can show them what it is.
Well, aren't we doing it in the core?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing some in the core. We're doing some in the core. You know, for instance, zero escaping, the biggest thing is zero escaping in the core is we've, we've narrowed up the streets. Yeah, from 37 to 33 feet. So that's four feet of less runoff per street. Um, it also helps with maintenance in the future, lower maintenance cost, but it certainly reduces the amount of runoff.
Because ours, we, we're gonna be under a lot stricter rules on our drainage.
Yeah. Once the census is over.
So we're trying to be a little bit proactive.
I'm gonna qualify my earlier statements of you coming up with a plan. Don't bring a hundred and fifty thousand dollar plan.
No, no, I, I get it.
Okay. Fifty is the most you could possibly bring.
Yeah, no, it, we would like to show developers that you don't have to invest a ton of money in concrete pipes to handle your storm water. There's some alternatives that they could actually beautify their subdivision with, um, and accomplish the same thing. But developers vary leery about drainage in particular.
Yeah, they don't like to do it.
They don't like to do it because there's no money in it. There's no, they can't really justify that, so.
But I think it can be sold as a, um, to, to a developer as a, to use your words, as a showpiece for the development itself.
Yep.
So I don't know, I guess I would, I would be in favor of foregoing the expense of it, but trying to encourage, encourage it in other ways without necessarily even having to have a showplace, uh, design. I'm sure, um, I would suspect that most contractors and, uh, engineers, uh, know what, know what you, we mean by that.
Not, not in South Dakota.
I was surprised I hadn't heard it, so, but, Ken?
Uh, sidewalks and crosswalks, we want to finish the bike plan and then we can start prioritizing the, the trails. We'd also like to look at, uh, replacing sidewalk, repairing sidewalk. Um, some of the areas, uh. Pardon? Yeah, um, significant sidewalk issues.
What's finished bike plan? Where, where's the bike park right now? Uh, what do we gotta finish?
Uh, we have to start the bike, bike plan. The bike plan is supposed to be started this year, so she's still work, she's working on that and it's, she's got it all off to the MPO, I think, so.
Nothing done in the works for a number of years?
But we're not gonna get anything done this year?
Should, she still plans to.
Oh, does?
Yeah, a lot of that's funded by the MPO.
Okay.
The revenues that is in there on that side.
So with that 50,000 is continuation of what, trying to get down this year?
Yeah.
Weed controls, spraying weeds in the streets. Page 24 Transit.
Spraying weeds in the streets, okay, that's something that doesn't quite.
Yeah, we, we need to spray weeds in the streets that grow in the cracks.
Curbs.
Curbs, curb lines. Not yet, that I'm aware of.
Actually trying to do it a little later in the fall. Uh, we tried to, slurry seal areas where they're going to do their slurry seal. So we've got a majority of our apple are dirt, so we're coming soon.
I would probably lower though.
Yeah, it's just.
Thirty, three, four thousand in the past years.
It was a number that we threw in there because some of the stuff we were actually getting some, I think, a little bit of material dropped down for, for, for us too, so.
And we need to do more.
We need to do more.
We need to do more of it.
Because it ruins the infrastructure when the weeds are in the cracks. The transit, I just plugged in last year's budget, um, just because we're changing, um, providers from interlakes to rocks. I don't have a solid budget yet, so I just plugged in last year's.
I thought that was supposed to be the same.
The contract is.
Contracts, yeah.
The con, the, the contract that we pay rocks versus interlakes is the same, but the operation of the system, um, may change.
Which is general expenses, just general expenses in there?
Yeah.
Animal control, no major changes. We contract with, uh, Minneap, um, Sioux Falls Humane Society to do that. And then West Nile is our mosquito spraying.
Um, Devin, have we sprayed more this year?
No, less.
Less? Is it, we haven't had any trouble with mosquitoes.
It's been dry.
Usually all the time, Andrew Kelly, who kind of gauge mosquitoes off of them because they're down very long rivers. If they're bad, let's, you know, bad, spraying them.
Normal year, we probably spray every other week.
Normally it's every other week, twice a month. Uh, this year we did have to start with and then we'll cut back when we go with it. On the special events, tournaments, movie nights, things like that.
Recreation senior citizens, that's the, we pay that 6,000 of the VFWs for the senior citizen use of their room. Recreation center, hopefully we, we have a rec program next summer.
Yeah, we didn't spend any of that this year.
Swimming pool, um, we're anticipating some, some finished work on the, on the project for next year as well as an increase in staffing.
But that's overstated in the respect because it's the finished work, it's not the operating budget, that 320,000.
Correct.
That's coming out of reserves.
Correct. Parks department.
That insurance number is really high too, so we have to look at that.
Change in, change in coverage.
So how many people are on that?
Three, three full-time employees.
Okay, good. Increases by them going from single to family and.
Yep.
Increases in the budget by 40%.
Yep. Other than that, nothing huge on operations. Page 28, park capital improvements. Included in there is the purchase of a new Kubota, uh, some skid loader equipment. Aspen Park Road, which would take a gravel road from the south or the parking lot right next to Field A, south to Ironwood.
We need to get that second inch in that, but we've been working on that for a while.
Yeah.
Is that where we lock something that we can be table for a year?
Well, here's my concern on this. So over the years, we've worked really hard to get that capital budget up. So if we put in a park, a park costs us 300,000 to 350,000 to just see how that, that's a line, you know, that's an example. If we, we worked from getting the capital budget up from a couple hundred thousand to where it is now about 400,000. If we cut that back down, it's gonna take us five years to get it back up to 400,000. And I, I think that in a city of Bran, of Brandon, obviously infrastructure is important. Our police, water, sewer, I've always said that, but our parks are very prominent in the respect that that's what people see. And so I think it's important to keep, uh, 400,000 on an eight-point, some million dollar budget for parks, I think is, or park infrastructure is fair. So I would not like to see that cut. I do think that, uh, I just saw in the paper that Hocky got their naming rights for their building. And we don't have anything in here to pay for getting the land ready for that hockey facility. And as we talked last year, Mayor, you didn't, you wanted us to not have that as a placeholder because we never spent it. So we took it out, um, and we may have some costs there. I mean, that's exciting. They got a, they got a naming rights. So I don't know where they are on their budget, but, um, I'd like to keep that in there in case we need to shift it.
What is this parking lot falling off?
On the north side of the swimming pool, because you know what the parking is like there.
I, I do, because I go around the.
And that's part of the, in the park plan, yeah.
I'd almost rather use it towards that road, go through Ironwood then. It's gonna benefit the baseball field and the hockey.
Well, we have 150 in there for the road.
So the road would go down to, to, to Ironwood, you said?
And then hook back up to Sioux, right?
Eventually, Ironwood will have to be constructed from Sioux to the park.
So this would be an asphalt road?
Well, this would be gra, Ironwood would be gra, or asphalt. But the park, or the Aspen Park Road here is gravel. That's just for gravel base course, including no curb and gutter or paving.
That's just to get it going.
Yeah, so that, that's only from Centerfield, Diamond Bay to the south a little ways?
Yeah, down to Ironwood.
Should we have a guess and then Hocky's gonna have the money for the next year?
I was surprised when it showed up in the paper. I don't know.
So were we.
No, I thought they told us that they were planning to still.
2022.
Or, or another year.
Yeah. It's the last they told us. They would, their projection is to build spring in 2022.
They have to have 1.7 million year before, but.
And we earmarked like 100 grand?
We have, we did it this year. We have in the past, for years we did, uh, but it's not in there right now.
I completely understand and respect what you're, what you're saying, Barb, but for me, when I look at necessities, the parking lot by the pool would be at the very front and at my priority list.
Well, this is a recommendation coming from Park Board. And we have Park Board in place to help give us some guidance as to what our park system needs. So it may be that, you know, if you're not comfortable with their recommendation, I still would say that we need to have that money in there. And I'm always one on the budget, I'm very cautious on budgeting, but I, I believe very strongly that if we lose 200,000 in the park budget, it, it will be years before we ever get it back. And I think that that would be really sad.
Yeah, Barb, do you know how many parking spots are?
Is it 10, 15?
No, it's, uh, I think it was more than that.
That was in the 30s.
Yeah, I told, I think the total parking lot was somewhere between 50 and 60 as it laid out. But we were only talking the other night, it may be half of that. So 20 to 25.
And I mean, you, you can challenge what Park Board's recommending, doesn't mean.
But they're recommending what to do with their money, you're not, like, looking at, the city has a whole spending.
No, they're, they're, they're all, they're created to help give us some priorities for the parks. That's why they were created.
So the design on that, parking lot would go between the, where the tents courts are. And the existing building, because the existing, existing building stays, stays intact. And then further, I would assume maybe, I'm assuming it would be kind of a long, narrow one along there?
So it's getting your parking off the street.
Okay, yeah, what about, you know, the, the road coming in Aspen, or the, the road coming into the park? Part of that gets paid as part of this main avenue project, is, am I right?
I think what they, what they're going to tear up crossing it with the force main, they'll fix. We.
They didn't ask for a pole to go down towards the water.
Did they? Okay.
Well, that's where it's horrible.
Yeah.
Because they don't have the treatment, because it's always tore up in there. That absolutely needs to be fixed.
Once we get the construction done at the pool.
Yeah, after the construction, for sure.
And you know, so, you know, that's an option. Our, quite honestly, our, our challenge was in coming up with this budget is that we don't have enough money to do anything big. I mean, like I said, restructure.
We, we did a pretty big one last year, or this year.
Repaving, you know, like under playground equipment, that's a must.
Am I?
A bike trail.
What they're recommending here is 430 in capital improvements, is that correct?
Last year, well, last year we, we allocated all to the pool, right? So the year before, we spent 330. But we had 420 budgeted, so we spent 330, 340.
What's Gaga Ball?
Well, it's a big pit and then they go inside, they, they go by the elementary places and then they, it's a Gaga pit. Kids love it.
Kids love it.
Kids love it.
I don't know either, Jeff.
It just goes on a locktop surface and then it's basically like walls that are halfway up here and they go in and they throw the ball and.
It's the new version of dodgeball.
Yeah, but you're like, contained.
You can't hit anybody above the waist. Knees? Can't hit anybody above the knees. So it really kind of loses its appeal.
Is this naming rights from Lady Gaga?
I did, I did ask Devin when he proposed that if, if she would contribute.
Right, right. I think she should.
What would you put it at?
Uh, I haven't figured that out yet.
Oh.
There's a few spots, but I'd like to stick it at priority, but I'm really sick of being up close and stuff, so I don't want it.
Yeah.
So I don't.
And you know, what we could certainly do is have John, um, John come and speak to the council about the priorities and you could, you know, voice your concerns and you can take it back to Park Board. Uh, he's the chair, so he would be happy to do that.
I just would like to find a way, like Barb, I, I, I mean, I utilize the parks all the time and I agree with, I don't like seeing being cut, but then I also know we need infrastructure big time. So then it's kind of hard too to kind of try to figure out what's best for overall. And so I see your point too, that you don't want to lose your budget at the same time. We need infer, you know.
Well, I, I like what Barb said, the, the parks are, well, besides this, maybe the school system, that's the focal point that we see, the public sees all the times that we've balled out, maybe not so much the pool, but any, anything we can do to improve parking down there, I mean, 15, 20 spots, it sounds like a lot and it isn't. But, uh, expanding from then getting, you know, eventually getting Aspen Park Road down there. Would that also include, uh, any additional parking as we go south there or not so much?
No, it's just gravel. It would just be a driveway, an access driveway. Eventually, um, the master plan shows, uh, a number of new parking lots to the south off of that access road, off of the driveway, whatever we're gonna call it.
And if I'm not mistaken, the, the, uh, new ice rink that's going south.
Of the south end.
Is it going more or less where the intersection is of, while the, of this new road and Ironwood?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, yeah, it'd be just to the east of Ironwood. Actually, we.
Be all the way down there, right?
Yeah, be way on the south end. So where Ironwood comes in, there'd be a road connection, there'd be a parking lot and then the hockey rink would be down there. If you, if you drive down Sioux and look east into Ironwood.
Right.
You would see the, I'm assuming the elevation would change a little bit. That's, that's where you'd see it.
Where's your parking lot, pool parking lot number coming from an engineer or?
Um, John Jagerson gave us the number there. He, he was looking at it. That's the typical price and I can't remember what it was.
Was it 30 of the highest priced parking spots I've ever seen in my entire life, Brian?
Could be.
I think, and I may be off.
Well, it'd have to have curb and gut, it'd be curb and gutter and, because there's nothing there. So it'd be curb and gutter and asphalt.
The number you always used for parking spots was 3,000 a spot though. I, I'm just pulling that out of my. I, I'm just pulling that out of my memory.
We'll take a look, I, eh, he used a number, I can't remember what it was.
Why wouldn't we need curb and gutter? I mean, I, I'm all for curb and gutter on real parking lots, don't get me wrong, but nothing else is down there having anything near that, so.
Well, it, it, we should have it, that's one of the reasons why the road's junk, because if you don't curb and gutter, you're blacktop, you never hold an edge. It always just, it always just breaks away.
Yeah, the argument, it's all like trucks.
That too.
Trucks.
Yeah, there.
And we can get it cheaper, we'd be happy to do that.
Tim, Dave, where you guys at, this pool parking lot, are you guys?
What's that?
Does the pool parking lot, are you guys?
You know, we've, we've got the pool, the pool redesign, and, and I don't know what kind of browser that's going to break during the summertime. It, it does get rather crowded in there, cars parked every which way. I, I think parking lot would be appropriate down there. Especially with all the improvements, how much we putting in the pool?
One six.
Yeah. One four, and, uh, I think, I think it's probably needed, um, parking down there as news. If this pool project looks real well, there's a good possibility more people are going to be using it, they're going to be more working.
One thing I would, would add there, if we, if we're doing this parking lot, is make sure there's some signs there.
Pool parking.
Parking, you know, to the east or west, I mean.
So since we're, well. Since we're below budget, why can't we take it just out of our initial budget for one point six for the pool?
That's just what I was going to suggest, maybe you get Tammy down there to see if they quit, get something in change order with the current contractor for a spot down there.
We'll take a look.
They're down there. And maybe that would jack them up a little bit on the present project.
Yeah, where are they at on that, where are we at, what's that complete, what'd you say?
The pool?
They started digging up the, the foundation for the camp room. And then we're trying to get some water lines out of the, plus a new shoe now.
Last two days I've been down there, there's one guy running a machine.
They've been waiting, they were waiting on, I don't know, colors for a while, we got that figured out, so they got some stuff. Some have been waiting on the architect too, so I think they have everything figured out. Oh, and then right now they are waiting on a change order because they hit a water line down there, so. They kind of stopped, I think, after that.
They hit a water line, why did we have to pay for them to hit the water line? We didn't, we didn't park it, or?
Yeah, it wasn't located.
It was thought to be abandoned, and it was not, or it's still there. So it was not in the design, initial design to, that it was there.
As, as we do anything down in Aspen Park, we're going to have a number of.
Yeah. We don't know where anything is down there.
We don't know where anything's at. You got electrical lines that look like a spider web. You've got water lines that kind of run whichever way, we've got sanitary sewer lines that. There's no rhyme or reason to it.
Going nowhere.
I wouldn't say going nowhere, just. It wa, it was, it was the most convenient route, I think, the one that came out of that north concession stand. We jerry-rigged something into an existing holding tank that then went, you know, instead of just replacing a whole new line, like we should have done, we jerry-rigged it into a existing detention tank that had a line in it, or it created issues for us a couple of years ago.
Would you call it, Tim, like a spider web?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, true spaghetti on plate.
There.
That's right.
So are we making any notes, so that we know where that stuff is for the future?
We used to pay to locate the lines, but you find the one, and then the other one, and then six inches of it, you can walk there.
Now we just cut them.
It's cheaper just get them, and then try and locate them.
And then make note that, hey, we've got something here.
I will say that they have a two-inch line that's going into the building, so when they fix it, I think everyone can use that two-inch line. The other piece that went past the pool was going to be abandoned, but the piece that came off the main, what they were talking about, is a front door.
It's in out of the, beginning of like, just that Christine or something.
Yeah.
About the slide puddings and the main water line are in the way of each other.
Yeah, it's got to be moved, so.
So, um, it's.
So no change order, you're saying?
Tim, you have any thoughts?
I'm fine.
I like the idea of doing that.
I have bigger thoughts. A parking lot doesn't really.
Uh, forestry and nursery bumped up the trimming higher mulching as, if, if, uh, in anticipation that we would need to hire a chipper. Probably Sukup to come in and chip the tree pile after we, after we trim. Just an update, we'll be starting ashtray removals in October in the right of way, in the southwest part of town, or.
No, we're kind of open to the bus area, Stone Ridge, uh, French Creek, and the brand, that's where we're.
Yep.
Oh, about fifty-ish trees. Or something, thirty-ish, so it's a small area.
Included in that thirty thousand is what we annually do, a third of the city, we trim about a third of the city over sidewalks and streets.
Are you, are you doing any treatments on, on trees, or?
We're not doing treatments at this time.
Okay, it, it says treatments and removals.
Yeah, at some point we'll probably start treatments, but I'll kind of do that till, I've actually called the law here, for about five, you know, or just waste their money.
Okay.
How are we coming on the tree drought, please?
We have a meeting scheduled Friday before next week.
Yep. So it should be on the next agenda.
Do we need a budget in a little bit for services for that?
No, that, we did, we included ten thousand.
Mulching.
For mulching, or chipping. Okay. Uh, library, that's just kind of a placeholder, I'd say it, but just in case they would like to, the la, the last thing they did was expensive painting and carpet.
I'll check that to see what we got on the tab for that, if, if anything.
Can you share the cost for that?
Yep.
Major repair we do.
Yeah, Ty's usually pretty good about, if there's something coming up, he'll let us know. Uh, economic development, got a proposal in there to hire, um, a full-time development director starting July of next year. Uh, that would take over economic development from Dennis, as well as taking planning and zoning off of Tammy's plate. So she would just be doing more engineering work, she wouldn't need to be doing P and Z work.
So you can study it for half year?
Yep. Um, you know, looking at it, it, it'll probably take us that amount of time to get the ball rolling, get the search done, figure out where we're going to put the person.
So if we're playing on that sixty thousand line?
Yep.
I mean, for their wage break.
Yeah.
The whole year, not the half year, but.
So that wouldn't take any work off of your plate?
Uh, maybe. Primarily, I'd, I'd like to get as much as I can off of Tammy's plate. You know, she's, she gets bogged down with, you know, the construction progress going on, and then if there's P and Z stuff, if we can get that off of her plate, I think that would help quite a bit. And as Dennis has stepped back more and more, um, you know, Lakita Makita's an awesome organization, but I still think we need our own person doing that work. And I'd like to combine, a lot of times you see economic development director and a planning director as two separate positions. And there's nothing worse than those two departments fighting because the economic development person is, is bringing in this industry, and the planning director's going, you can't put them there. So it's nice to combine it into one, one spot. Uh, promoting the city, that's primarily.
Just comment on that, that one's, I think that's a pretty important position, folks, we got to. You talk about a park being a gem, we got a gem out there, uh, in the industrial park. That is a true blue gem, and I, I think it's worthwhile spending the money to, to get a full-time person uh, developing that, and, uh, not developing it, but marketing and helping, helping go there, so.
I like the idea of combining, so basically it's a kind of a half-half position?
Yeah, you know, probably, probably throw in a little administrator, assistant administrator stuff too.
How much time does Dennis spend out of the house?
Um, more than, more than he anticipated, you know, I think.
Less than he needs to, whatever you're saying?
Depends, yeah, probably.
I mean, it would be really nice to have some full-time representation doing that kind of work.
We're just paying Dennis an hourly rate now to, to push the paper and, and.
But to really, you know, I'm, I'm not a big.
Do the meetings.
I'm not a big proponent of chasing smoke stacks. But we need somebody that can, can work with our existing businesses to help them if they're, they're expanding, that's where you get most of your growth, is existing businesses. So work with them, do probably a more robust marketing campaign than, than we currently do for our industrial park. We've been very fortunate, um, that we haven't necessarily had to get out and do a big marketing thing. I think, uh, two lots just got sold, and other ones in the works. So that's pretty good without pushing marketing.
It's all good stuff.
Thirty-five years, um, most of our parks have been built because Minnesota's a horrible place. Right, I mean, LaFern, 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 A and A, all those businesses are from Minnesota, both electric is from both Minnesota. All of them came, so we didn't really have to work very hard in selling those lots.
And, and didn't, didn't see their, contain a principal contact? I mean, that brought in different things, or, or make you pile any covers off of?
No, we, we haven't gotten anything from the government.
Yeah, G, G O E D is not.
Um, we've had more help from Makita Lakita.
Yeah.
Um, and it's just people calling the city office.
In my experience.
And Dennis always handled that when he was the city administrator. But it's got to be, it's more, it's a more involved job than just taking a couple of phone calls and.
Yeah, if you're a real home party, you take, you got hours of research.
You know, of course, frankly, G O D, G O E D does basically nothing for us, yeah.
Chuck is the president of the Development Foundation, I think he has a few words to say here.
We haven't gotten any help from G O E D since Jankel. Yeah.
Well, I guess that's no surprise.
We'll get, we'll get a, a feeler every once in a while, hey, we got this hot business that wants to move to town, here's some really basic details, we're not going to tell you anything else.
Yeah, I've, I've had those calls on the, on the railroad too, from, from there, so.
Yeah.
I was hopeful.
We're always, we're always hopeful with G O E D. Okay. Uh, promoting the city, that's, flower baskets come out of there, and then as far as supplies, we're looking at some more.
Trying to do some more promo items, um, our leaf days do come out of there, um, our ice cream treats for kids' safety come out of there. So there's just some, just various stuff that come out, that come out of there.
You know, we were going to put Christmas decorations on, on, on Sioux.
Yeah, we talked about putting them on Sioux.
We got three thousand of them.
That's just, that's just for repairs, for replacing bulbs and stuff. No, Christmas, tr, Christmas decorations, what did I tell you the other day, they're about three hundred bucks a pop.
I might get a picture of this. I had a present and ask.
Dave, this is a topic for some, some other time, but not, maybe not necessarily. I know that in the paper, and I don't have the numbers, not my yet, but in the paper it said, our per capita spending is, what, three hundred and thirty?
Sales tax.
Sales tax is three hundred and thirty bucks.
Three hundred and thirty-one dollars per capita.
Right.
Roughly.
But if we, and that's per month.
No, that's annual.
That's per, per, three thirty-one per, per capita. So if everybody in town spent, how did that particle read? Do you know where I'm leaning it?
If everyone in town spent an additional?
It was five bucks.
Five dollars.
That was the five dollars.
Yeah, if they spent five bucks a week, so you're looking at fifty-two times five times ten thousand. You know, if everybody would spend five dollars per capita per week, it'd generate two point six million in sales. It would generate fifty-two thousand in sales tax.
Five bucks is nothing, why not, why not say fifty?
Jack, it's a campaign, let, get, let them start somewhere.
Tiny steps, tiny steps.
How many fifty bucks is?
These teachers.
Found an ambush.
I think the, the video that the chamber did. The video that the chamber did is a good, a good start in, in promoting sales tax and trying to explain why sales tax is important to us. I think the actors that were involved in that video are just standing.
No, I do really like those, Rachel, good job.
They should be up for some awards.
Those are nice. Yeah, you guys both did very well. I know, I liked how they explained, and you showed pictures, it just.
Maybe we should watch that video or something.
Yeah, put it up on the big screen.
Nope, I'm in charge, so no.
Talking about five, but why not go for it, say fifty bucks? Just, you know, bring it down to another level, like I said, if you take a gas, it's a half a grocery cart.
Yeah, if, you know, if we would get up to, I mean, we're never going to hit Sioux Falls, which is eight hundred and some per capita.
Did you say hearing was?
Hearing was like three sixty?
About four hundred.
You know, if we, if we get thirty dollars per capita more in sales tax, you know, that's going to generate three hundred thousand dollars.
I can see it now, holiday, this holiday season, give the gift to your community, spend fifty.
Well, the gift card thing apparently went over a real while, right, during the, during COVID stuff?
Although over sixty thousand gift card sales.
There, that's good.
Well, you can see it in our sales tax receipts, the effect that COVID had on people staying in town, they shopped in town. They were either laid off or not going to work at Sioux Falls, so it wasn't convenient to stop at Hy-Vee or Fairway on their way home.
Right.
So they stopped here at Sunshine. Now that everything's back open, we have dropped down to what we were at last year.
It is, it is an interesting topic of discussion, Jack. If you ask most people, they think when they buy something, it's a staple.
We can't bash Sioux Falls now.
I mean, they, they, they have no concept of how taxes work.
What's that, fifteen?
This is an example, I was doing some research, Mitch, Mitchell, fifteen thousand people, collects fifteen million in sales tax. We collect.
Yeah, and, you know, that, again, that's, that's all relative, because, you know, they're not in close proximity, they have to have everything right there.
Hundred percent agree, but when we come to running a city, it does matter.
Oh, absolutely, I get that.
Yeah, if, if we were located thirty miles east, I think we'd have a different.
We'd also be in there, so.
Okay, if we were located four mi, forty miles west, that'd be better. It would be a much different story than what we've got.
Okay, let's keep moving.
Uh, page twenty-nine, or thirty, thirty.
Couple of things I want to point out here, um, this is our annual debt, we don't have much choice on this, but I do want to point out, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we were about three hundred thousand in debt. Twenty twenty-one's budget is one point seven million dollars in debt, which makes it tough.
Debt payment.
Annual payments, yes, debt annual payments. So it's going to get tougher and tougher to fund stuff such as equipment in parks and capital improvements and.
It does help, the sales tax going up each year does help.
Yep.
But, uh, we're doing a lot of stuff, and we're bonding all this stuff, so the.
And the debt.
There's only so much we can do.
Annual debt is increasing quickly, so.
And we're seeing about a two, two and a half percent increase in sales tax revenue a year.
Yeah.
Roughly.
About the last five years, spent about two or three.
My math came up a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand a year.
Yep.
Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
So that does help, I mean, that.
It helps.
Increases our capacity, but not enough.
Not enough.
Um, if you look down at the bottom, operating transfers out, a million dollars. Part of that is for decor, phase two, Ironwood, um, what's the other one?
Redwood Chestnut.
Redwood Chestnut. And then five hundred and eighty-eight thousand is an anticipated transfer to the golf course. Approximately two hundred thousand of that is, uh, operating deficit. And then the remainder is for, um, the bank stabilization along Split Rock Creek, not the wall, but the bank stabilization project. That's about four hundred thousand, roughly. So that's what, that's that five eighty-eight transfer.
So you mentioned in, in this million is, is the core phase two.
Yep, for design.
Just design.
Because that, we haven't, we, we run a construct, a capital equipment account, correct me if I'm wrong, and we transfer out, we can't have a deficit in that account at the end of the year, so we transfer out at the end of the year to cover that cost until we sell the bond, and then we reimburse the general fund.
Well, what did you find out from your discussion with H D R?
H D R indicated that they probably could be, uh, able to get the plans done for phase two. H D R indicated that they probably could be, uh, able to get the plans done for phase two. Of, uh, what? For bidding next. They didn't give that, I asked Paul to give me a proposal, including the time, a date as to when we would be able to bid it.
Haven't got that.
Haven't got that yet. So hopefully, I told him I wanted it for the September eighth council meeting to look at. I always start getting nervous if we're bidding anything after February. So, once I get that proposal put in the packet, but he indicated that they, they could probably get it done.
Well, that would be good, I think, to at least be able to see it.
From the last meeting, I sensed from this council a desire to push more on the core project rather than the Rushmore project. Dana, we, we just don't have the manpower to do both.
What about high manpower? You're saying Tammy's already stretched.
Right, and if you don't have somebody that is on your staff managing that project, you have an outside engineer, you got issues.
And, and we've got.
In my opinion, in my opinion.
We've got a couple of other big projects going on. We got the water tower. I think a, a huge project that is going to take much more staff time than people realize is the design of the water treatment plant. And that's on the books for next year. I've been involved with two wastewater treatment plants, one brand new facility and one renovation. And they take up a huge amount of time, staff time, uh, meeting with the engineers, going through those designs, making sure that what the engineer puts on paper is actually doable by the operator. Engineers have a tendency to say it looks good on paper until you build it and then it sucks. So that alone is going to take up, I think, more time than, than people realize.
And we have an intern that working under Tammy now. Um, is that a college student? How?
College student.
But they're G I S.
They're G I S. Okay. We're trying to get our G I S up and running.
They're not an engineer.
Do we lower the budget for G I S?
Nope.
No, we opted.
Increased it.
So what's the possibility of having an intern serving as a, I wouldn't, I don't want to call him a project manager, but as an assistant? Especially if you do some of the labor work and run it around and things.
Typically on a construction project, we hire construction, a lot of construction admin from the engineer.
Just thinking of freeing up a little bit of Tammy's time?
Are there engineering students that are looking for summer internships in that capacity? I've just walked around and said you're doing G I S stuff, but I don't.
Yeah, the, the, the G I S intern isn't an engineering intern. They're typically G, uh, G I S or geography.
And or software.
Yeah, um, I think both of them we've had have been geography majors, if I remember right. Yeah, there, there are, uh, engineering interns.
I know there's like former company, parent company had three interns this, this past summer. And Dan exactly, they were doing this project management type stuff, but they were all college students.
Yeah.
So I think it's doable, but.
S T S U is a great engineering program.
It's the only, I forgot about mines.
Yeah, school mines too, yeah.
To, to a degree, in, uh, interns are good, but it also takes an increased supervisory or teaching them what to do.
True, increase Tammy's time.
So there's a trade-off there. Once, that first year intern is tough, but the second year intern, when you get the same intern back, it's awesome. Cause I think when, uh, the one we had before Ryan, Marcus. Second year Marcus just went out and did his G I S stuff with, with minimal supervision. He just knew what he was doing. Um, but that first year training that intern to, to do what you want him to do is. I mean, I've had some interns as, as in the office, as, you know, administrative interns. It was a whole lot more work than it was worth. But we can certainly, we can certainly talk about it.
I think if we were quiet and we're taking some things off of Tammy's plate of P and Z, I might, might consider to be told in public in both of these sections of town. We met with all these, these, uh, engineering firms and told them that we were moving forward and now we're going to break some.
Yeah, I'm just trying to come up with ways to, to help move both projects, like you said.
We can review it.
Did H D R ever say why they went up so much? I mean, I thought it was twenty thousand.
I asked that, I asked that as well. I wanted to break down as to where the, the cost.
Fifteen million came from?
Yeah, the change, the increase in costs. You know, uh, on the Sylvan Circle projects, we were running about four hundred, four hundred and twenty-five bucks a linear foot. Granted, it didn't have sidewalk, but we're up a little over eight hundred bucks a linear foot here in the, in the core. Now, the sidewalk isn't going to count for four hundred dollars worth. Um, page thirty-one, third cent sales tax. We are, we, you know, we're anticipating about a ten percent reduction, so about two hundred thousand in revenue for the third penny for next year. We're looking at all of our dues, Secog, Makita, the Chamber, et cetera, the Development Foundation subsidy. We're only looking at about a hundred and seventy-one thousand in expenditures. So that, that includes the original request from the Chamber of seventy-five thousand. So.
What was that, sixty?
Well, adopted column, third column over, bumped it up to seventy-five. I talked to, with Mr. Parsons, um, about the. Whoa, he's a member of the public now. About the Development Foundation subsidy. And since they're selling properties out there, that's been significantly reduced. So once that dropped down by fifty thousand, it's uncomfortable allocating that full amount to the Chamber right away.
I think the, you get a really good deal. We have to do it. We don't have, we don't have a people.
No. Uh, page thirty-two, street maintenance fund, repairs is just our normal patching program. Uh, we've got painting in their signs. We'll, we'll restart our slurry seal that we delayed this year. What area will be slurry sealed?
Silver Ridge, uh, Breck Creek.
Okay.
Or tip the park position to, uh. So that number might be a little.
Yep, and then patch, pad. We didn't. Patching and, and curb and gutter repair, we try to do that, uh, in the area that we're going to be microsealing the next year. So we're trying to get ahead of it a year instead of everything being compressed. We're finding significant curb and gutter damage.
So that makes sure we let people know what we're going to do.
Yep, we've talked about it. Uh, we moved, the next area that we moved into, we had door hangers out already, so we got that taken care of.
Comment on the Holly Boulevard joint repair that was supposed to be done this year. And my answer in City Hall was Tammy didn't have time to get that put together.
Yep.
So just put that in perspective, folks, when we're talking about all these projects.
So the Holly joint repair.
That was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project that didn't.
That, and it was, would have been really hard to do with the core project at the same time.
At the same time as the core. Plus, we've got a window here that we have to hit with schools, so we can't really do it before school. We don't want to do it before school gets out. We want to get it done before school starts. Cause we'll be taking a lane out of service for the project at a time. And if you haven't noticed, granted Aspen's closed, but that Holly's a little busy these days with school starting. So we really want to get that project done during the summer before school starts. Yeah, it's getting there. Uh, if you drive up and down, take a look at the joints, primarily in front of the middle school is probably the worst area with the turning.
When is Aspen supposed to get open?
Probably another.
Coming up on five, six weeks there.
Yeah, it's coming up on four, um, so probably, probably another two to three is when I talked to Fisher, John Fisher. So they're, they're pushing that six weeks.
Cause we're at, oh, we're past four weeks. We're almost five, I think.
It's just past four, Ju- July twenty-third.
Right, yep. So they'll, they'll be bumping up against that six weeks.
So that's only a week and a half away.
Yep.
It'll only take an extra year. It was supposed to be done last year.
Well, I know that.
Did he think he was going to make that, Fisher, when you talked to him?
Yeah, he said two to three weeks. It should be done and bust out.
Well, that's.
And you talked to him last week, so.
Yeah, I talked to him Monday.
Oh, Monday this week?
Yeah, it was this, earlier this week I talked to him.
So two weeks would be six total.
Yeah.
I have to apologize. I have to go get a kit from South. Is that okay?
Yes, I'm wearing out myself.
Uh, we can go through, I mean, the bid convention center, that's, we've kind of touched on that with the convention center at the Holiday Inn.
That's dead, so you can't change anything there.
Page thirty-three, um, you know, we've got special assessment for Ironwood. That'll be in twenty twenty-two. Cover Center paid off early. Ironwood Street Project, we've got a little bit of, of work on the Ironwood Street Project. That will be a special assessment project, so we'll start digging into that, uh, this year, twenty twenty-one.
Where's that at?
Ironwood, on page twenty, on page thirty-three at the bottom.
Oh, okay, I bet, thank you.
Then we've got, uh, Redwood Chestnut, um, you know, as we go through the annexation study. Uh, we'll probably start looking at some preliminary design on Redwood Chestnut with construction to take place. I think I told issues manager today, two years for annexation if all goes well.
Speaking of annexation, uh, I think everyone got the letter from Rick Pugel about, uh, the, the sand mine and, and annex, annexing that parcel in. Where, uh, where are we annexed at? I mean, that parcel, risky parcel is done, and I'm assuming the parcel across the street is not.
Nope.
But everything else to the, to the west, the bluffs and the melt mud on the north side?
Yep.
They both are?
Correct. We, when you annex, you don't need to annex state property, so Big Sioux Rec, we didn't need to annex it, so that allowed us to, to leapfrog that area.
So is the, uh, cause this is, it's been a while since I've dealt with that, and I said, don't you have to annex? Don't you have to be continuous?
That's, unless it's state property.
Unless, so we're able to leapfrog.
Yep.
And so then it's annexed from the west side of the Sioux Rec?
No, nope. Our, our city limits start at the big apartment building on Holly on the south side. That includes the bluffs. And then on the north side of the roads, it's, uh, from Sioux Valley Energy to the funeral.
You, you drive out, you cross the bridge, you're.
You're in the county.
You get Sioux Valley, you're back in the city.
Yep.
Right, so I thought you said we had to be continuous now.
We are.
Off of the state.
Off of the state park.
Oh, just because it loops around and we catch a little lip of it?
I think they connect to the property north of Sioux Valley too.
That's how we got around that.
That new annexation.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's a, you're supposed to be continuous unless there's a state park or state-owned property, which we can annex.
And that, because the way it loops around on the south and east of.
It actually, it comes down off of the bluffs. There's a, a drainage way that connects into, I mean, it's just a little sliver. That's how we did it. So LC Mets owns the property, the farm on the south side of the road.
Right.
And then Ristie's own everything on the north. We only have in the city limits that house that's north of Casey's, that one that's kind of down.
Yep.
That's in the city limits.
That is in city limits.
That corner is not. That farm site, White House barn at the northwest corner of Holly and Sioux, that is not in the city limits.
I thought you just said that was.
No, that is, the house to the west of it is.
So right at the intersection across from Casey's.
Yeah.
Not city limits, and then the house is city limits, and then the river.
The house to the west of the river, of the railroad tracks is in the city limits. The house to the east of the railroad tracks is not.
If you go on a, Maniac County G I S, you can see what city limits are.
But even if we annex all of that, the road is still in the state of counties, right?
We would like it to. They would, they would like to give it to us, of course, but we don't want it.
We just have a region with them for snow.
Yeah, we do snow removal on it.
Uh, are there any plans to widen that?
Eventually there will be, I think. Actually, I think we've talked with the county about a corridor study on Rice-Holly.
It worked, working out.
Yeah. Yep, and we made plans when we, when we did our section of Holly to the, to the bridge.
The bridge is lined up to, to come in.
Yep. Yep. Uh, core, we've got three hundred thousand in there for design. Rushmore project, we've got about six, almost six million for construction next year. Uh, Water Conservation Committee, we've got some money in there. Water fund, um, on page thirty-five, we've got some upgrades to well number six that we want to do for next year. Once well number eight's up and running, we can take six out of production and retrofit it. Um, we've got a million dollars in there for the water treatment plant design for next year. And then we've got phase two of the meter replacement program for next year as well. And the construction of the tower on the east side.
How many phases Christina are there to the water meter replacement?
Six or seven.
Which, which is okay, cause like now, we don't want them to all go out at the same time.
Yeah, we don't.
So you've got the five point six plus in there for the tower.
Mm-hmm.
Did Tammy get any, anything on the, uh, altitude belt relocating that?
Not, no, she's been gone. Uh, when she gets back, we're going to have her run some cost estimates to move it to the golf course. Or move it to either across the street or the golf course property.
Make sure that we have that done, uh, for the next meeting?
Should. Cause it, it's basically just pipe costs and parking lot replacement. So it should be pretty easy to quantify.
Speaking of agenda, could you put that on the agenda?
Yep, I've got it. Administration, we've got the transfer out for the engineering, um, a third of the engineers' costs. And then we've also got the transfer out for bonds. We're transferring out of the water in the sewer to help pay off the, um, sales tax bonds that we're selling to do the projects.
And the interns in, um, in there is, uh, what's the changes there?
Just normal.
Just normal.
So that's what, kind of an increase is that roughly ten?
Twelve.
Why, what, twelve or thirteen?
We, we used a six percent increase in premiums, so we'll go back and check those numbers. Uh, we've got the streetlight fund on page thirty-seven. The change there primarily, we talked about a little bit, is the street lights in the construction areas. And then the sewer fund, um, again, engineers and bonds and transfers out. We're looking at the Bethany Sewer Main that would run from Bethany Lift up to, um, pass the school, or the proposed school site to, um, T V and J's property in the southeast corner of Redwood and Chestnut.
Uh, I'm sorry, but you lost me here. Where are you at?
Page thirty-eight. So it says Bethany Sewer Main Design. So we'll get that designed twenty twenty-one with anticipated construction in twenty twenty-two.
Just from the council's information, I've been talking to Brian about that. I mean, that's got to start coming, cause we're getting closer uh, as a school to build that school out there. And I, when I, we build that school, it's, it's got to be ready to go. And, uh, the developer out there has contacted me and, and he's getting about ready to go, so. The timing seems to be about right, but we cannot have any deviation from the timing either.
Talking with the developer, they've got about a year, year and a half inventory left. And then they're going to, I think they're going to start moving some dirt around next year.
Well, we're going to get that area opened up fast, I think, for once. Well, we're gonna get that area opened up fast, I think, for once coming at foundation work.
Yeah, so the ideal spot there.
Run.
So when do you expect to start the school, twenty-two?
Twenty-five, twenty-six probably. Uh, but, you know, it, it, that takes time too, the conversation is gonna start probably happening in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Hanging on it?
So.
No.
And when the conversation starts, then, uh, the development starts.
That's elementary.
That's an elementary, yes.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And we've talked with the developers about installing that, and then we would, we would have impact fees or connection fees to recoup those costs.
So the two parts of that is the sewer and then that Chestnut, Holly, whatever you call it.
You're gonna get that.
That's gotta get.
Uh, page thirty-nine, a couple of things, we've got professional services, we want to do a preliminary, uh, design on that new force main to Sioux Falls. If you remember a couple of years ago, when we looked at that infrastructure, it's about eighty percent capacity right now or more. So that's kind of our trigger to start design, to install a second line to Sioux Falls from the lift station, the Big Sioux Lift. If you remember when they did SD one hundred, we put in a, a liner, so we don't have to dig up underneath SD one hundred. So we'll start preliminary design on that next year, probably start construction on that, uh, probably in twenty-twenty-two, because we'll be bumping up against that capacity.
So is it like a bigger line that, that it would run through there, or it's a backup, or it's a secondary, what is it?
It's probably a little of both right at the moment.
That size of line goes there now.
It's a twelve-inch?
So it would be another twelve, or what would it be around, any other?
I think it's bigger.
I was thinking they'd go in sixteen, and then under every one hundred.
That makes some sense.
Yep.
That's why it's been there since,
Ninety-three?
Eighteen, or ninety?
Ninety-one, I think, ninety, early nineties.
I think we started in ninety-three, so it would have been.
So the utilities for Sioux Falls Treatment, what?
That's our, that's our treatment costs?
Yeah, that's, okay, that's what I thought.
Yep. Uh, we're looking at about forty new homes for the SDC charge. We need to upgrade the pool lift station, uh, bigger pumps, motors, et cetera, probably a new wet well. Um, and then lifts, our normal lift station rehab. Golf Course.
Do we still pay a third on the SDC's charge? Is that it? Third, a third, a third, or is that dropped down?
No, it'll drop down a little bit, our share will drop down, um, that was a five, is it a five-year? We'll probably be at about twenty percent.
So it's ratcheting now?
Yeah, we ratchet it down a little bit each year.
So what that, what is that again?
SDC charge is a system development charge, Sioux Falls charges us for each new meter.
Okay.
So, um, six hundred, I think it's six hundred bucks for a through, a normal one or, or a half, or three-quarter to an inch. And then it's a multiplier for if it's a two-inch meter, an inch and a half, I can't remember the exact numbers. We charge, when we started this, we assumed about a third, a third went to the developer and a third went to the builder. We're weaning our, our share down, and then, and another year or two, that entire cost will be borne by the developer and the, and the contractor.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that was, that's kind of our buy-in to their system, we're buying our capacity for new capacity.
So if our share is going down, why is the budget going up? Just because of the forty homes?
Yep, because we, that's our cost, now we don't, we recoup some of that cost through those charges, but we have to show the total entire expenditure.
Gotcha, good, thank you.
Golf Course Maintenance, uh, the big thing there, we've got, uh, the bank stabilization project, there's, Christina's just been pulling her hair out with FEMA on it, and she thinks she has it figured out between the Clark Engineering report and FEMA stuff. That would include three, four spots?
Uh, Clark Engineering has five spots, actually, the fifth spot is actually more, it's actually a drainage issue, it's not a bank stabilization issue. So really thirty thousand of that is not golf course expenditures, uh, although it's in the golf course right now. The rest of them won't be the bank stabilization part of it. Um, our FEMA gal is kind of all over mitigation right now, trying to get us some ideas on what they're gonna cover on this. FEMA, out of the five sites, FEMA came and looked at three of those sites that were actually caused due to the flood, so whether they pay seventy-five percent on that, I, I'm not real hopeful, because our cost estimate is higher than their cost estimate, so, um.
As we talked, FEMA would probably pay for repairs to those works that we did ten years ago, or fifteen years ago on hole thirteen. I don't think that they're gonna pay for mitigation on some of the new areas that have been robed. There is, they're not, it's a, they look at it as a river or stream, that's what rivers and streams do.
And, well, on FEMA, you, you can repair damage, or you can, in one pot of money, from FEMA. Or, and/or you can improve the thing, and then that's mitigation, that was out of whole other pot, and there will sting your,
Correct, yep. But from my conversations with FEMA, and they've been some unlimited, they're, they, if it's stream, normal stream erosion, they don't, they typically don't fund that. But if you did some improvements like we did on thirteen, because I think we built some type of retaining wall and, and some riprap, that was damaged, they will pay to fix that. But they won't pay to repair the new damage.
So there's no revenue from FEMA built into this budget?
We, yeah, we included sixty thousand, I think.
Included sixty.
Six-zero.
Yeah.
Well, that may be something that we take a look at as, as we look at Clark's report. And we know we're gonna get FEMA funding, or we, we have a pretty good indication we're getting FEMA funding on hole thirteen.
Which is the highest cost estimate.
Yeah.
The highest cost estimate, or that cost estimate's a hundred and forty-two thousand, so if FEMA would fully fund it, we would get back a hundred, but.
So now the question becomes, do we want to repair the other damage right now?
So what's, what is plan for the bank stabilization back there?
Clark's, Clark Engineering did their report, I haven't, I haven't re, I haven't reviewed it yet.
Uh, as far as fixing it?
Yes.
Uh, riprap, I don't know, what they normally do on a bank stabilization, I guess.
Just rocks. Just riprap?
I don't know, riprap and,
I don't think there's any wooden structures like for spars, I,
Right, I don't think there is either.
I think I heard of lots of, yeah.
Is riprap just to, um, keep it from heavy and low more?
Pretty much.
Does he essentially replace it some of the, watch it out?
I have, you have, sure, you see like area on ten, by that pine tree that's there. Area on eleven, that's those really big, um, last flood, back behind thirteen, team, along thirteen.
Uh, excavation, riprap, erosion control, drainage fabric, turf reinforcement. On the hole thirteen, they're gonna remove the timber wall, sheet piling.
Oh, okay.
Reset drain tile, I don't know, so.
Okay, okay, cool, so it's about just,
Yeah, it's not just,
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Golf Course and the Pro Shop, uh, we want to paint it downstairs, and then, uh, we've got to propose to put GPS in the carts.
Yep, so the GPS in the carts, um, the first year one would be thirty-five thousand roughly. Uh, but that's all, that's all contingent on raising the revenue if you're selling ads on it. So we don't sell the ads, we don't get the GPS, so that's not expense we're gonna incur unless it's paid for through the revenue side.
A hundred percent?
A hundred percent, yeah. So the way that works is you can sell two ads for a hole, so we can sell thirty-six ads, and we'll probably keep a couple for ourselves. And so that's kind of the plan for small, is to go around, sell some ads, see how that goes, and, and hopefully we sell them all, hopefully it doesn't take long, we can get that going right away.
So the budget, you said thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, it's, it's a little, a little under thirty-five to, for the installation, then year two through four, so it'd be a four-year lease on that to match up with our carts. So the warranty on the GPS here is just four years, so it's kind of a perfect time to do it. So then year two, four would be about twenty-nine thousand a year, and that would also be paid for other revenues.
Every rules.
Advertisings on it, yeah.
Is that a real issue, not knowing where the carts are?
Um, well, the biggest thing is, if you, if you go out there, there's, there's rocks up everywhere, a lot of carts get where they, you know, they shouldn't be, it makes, uh, maintenance quite evident here where else are the spots. So you can geo-fence where carts can go, you can, it tells you, charge on carts, tells you, you know, where, where they're at any given time. Say we have a cart that's badly damaged, we can go back and, and gather where that happened, what happened, things like that, um.
Like it runs into a sign?
Like it runs into a sign.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then another thing before outings, you can shut, we can actually shut them off, like the click of a button, no cart can move or anywhere. So, which is really big, because if you can imagine, you know, you're a hundred and fifty people out there with their carts, and you want to start at nine, you, you know where they all are, and whether we give them or t here or not, they seem to find a way to find one and go.
It is one of the amenities that is probably one of the most asked things at golf courses.
Absolutely, yeah, in the Pro Shop, I would say,
The carts have GPS, you got no cars, so we don't have GPS.
And then that's the other side, so a lot of just talk about the management side, for us, another side is a GPS unit for the golfer. So it's another advantage for the golfer, and this isn't happening unless we raise the revenue for it.
So is any possibility of raising a large chunk from one entity, you know, so-called naming rights?
Potentially, yeah, that could be something that could be discussed, and anyone could be interested in that.
Are you gonna be the guy that has to do the sales, or?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll, I'm probably gonna be the one, um, our golf association might help a little bit, because they've got some contacts through our brick fundraiser and our rock fundraiser, right, other people who might be interested in getting on that as well.
So say I bet if you go back to your rock sponsors, you have a lot right there.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
That might be one of those.
And that, and that is a thing where their, you know, their eyes are on this thing all the time, you have to physically skip through the ad, you have to see it, so.
Clark? GPS system.
The whole thing.
Well, that's got a nice frame to it.
The whole thing.
You should have specified, Anna Clark, GPS.
I hit Brian on the maintenance, underneath the equipment, I don't know, we don't talk about that.
Yeah.
That's, uh, five years, that would be a five-year lease purchase for that second half of what Kelly got five years ago. So just to be transparent.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Um, you know, under the, on page forty, um, equipment, so that's,
Second.
Fifty-three thousand. So that would be a, a five-year, fifty-three thousand for five years. And that's a rough mower, fairway mower, intermediate mower, um, a leak, vacuum, for vacuum, lack of a better term. A big hole behind board to, uh, work carts.
So is there some salvage value on what they're replacing?
Um, I don't know that it's really replacing much, the fairway mower that, our second fairway mower that we're using, we purchased used two or three years ago, I don't remember. We purchased that for seven thousand dollars, and Kelly estimates it's gonna cost about ten thousand dollars to have it operational next year. Uh, it needs reels, and it needs a lot of work, and it'll reel it longer, like a thousand dollars. Um, the, the rough mower, and well, one of our, our old, old rough mowers, vagal orange one, you've probably seen it out there, that needs to be replaced, that's what the rough mower will be replacing. And then the intermediate would be a add-on to the one we already have. That's one Larry B. that rides around on all day, and, and we could use another one to keep up that work.
Is he too slow, or what?
There's, there's a, right now, he gets about half of it done in two days, and then just starts back over, so there's not much time for someone to be doing something else. And then the two work carts, I use work carts with, with boxes, those, those we are lacking on severely out there, we've got three or four that are from Shane.
Thank you.
Good.
Uh, Lounge, looking at replacing the patio furniture. And then in the community room, on page forty-three, nothing, nothing crazy there, just a note, if you look down on debt service, um, principal on bond, twentieth year of twenty. So twenty-twenty-one, the bond will be paid off probably in November, December.
Just a reminder on that lounge, Andrew, do not forget to talk to those people at Landscapes Unlimited if they have any plan for that.
Are they upstairs?
Yeah, the, the upstairs.
Did you mention that?
And open, and, he's trying to nail it on a date, but hopefully one of the next two meetings, uh, he will be here.
I guess not, just the lounge, the,
Yeah, upstairs.
Yeah, upstairs, is that what you call it?
They were there the other day, did you happen to mention it, though?
Well, that, so that's a different, that's a entirely different arm of their company.
Okay.
That's the, that's the design build.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this, this is on their, their operations side.
I think that's an avenue worth pursuing.
It's a thought, yeah.
So a couple of things, um, you know, the big, couple of big decisions anyway, Core versus Rushmore. You know, it really doesn't make any difference from a budgeting standpoint which, which one we do, because we'll just swap out bond proceeds as revenue, and it'll be a flow-through, but we need to, the council will need to determine which, which one, if you want to change it from what's proposed in the budget, to Rushmore with design on, on the Core Phase Two, or leave it as is. Another big one that, um, would have a pretty big impact on, on general fund expenditures would be the bank stabilization out of the golf course.
Can we switch to the Core, and we can leave the right more until later on, which is anybody on, on what we've done already in the right more?
No, the plans, the plans, you know, once they're done, they're done. You know, the only downside would be is if we switched engineering firms, because engineering firms all do things differently, so.
Why wouldn't we do that?
We wouldn't, I'm just,
The only, only additional cost would be slight inflation cost from year to year.
Yeah, but as far as the plans being done, no, they, they would still be a, a good set of plans. Um, if we used them next year, this year, or ten years down the road.
I think there's still a wish amongst us to try to get both done, though, right?
I'd rather go for the Core. Uh, I think we have to have a hard discussion on this health insurance, because I'm gonna pick on ours. We're going from fifty-five thousand to eighty thousand for health insurance. I, I don't think that it's our responsibility to try to mitigate all of the costs of going from a single plan to a family plan, et cetera, et cetera. I just don't think we can continue to do it. So my preference would be, uh, what we spent last year, maybe, I, I don't even know, we gross it up, but what we spent last year, and then you guys figure it out, based on these departments, what?
What did we spend last year?
Well, we need to clarify, we're going by the cost of the plan or the net spending of insurance, because that's where we got into a lot of debate last year, because we were supposed to go back to twenty-eighteen pricing.
What I ended up was seven hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Thirty-seven?
No, I think the cost of plan was like six fifty.
No, I'm talking about it's in the budget right now.
Oh, really? I didn't add them all up, we had asked for them to be added up, I believe.
Just a couple of years ago.
You bet. We need a strategy, I thought we had strategy for it.
Uh, here's the information on the plans. What plans we had, starting when we renewed the plan on six one of twenty twenty. The second column be, um, it's been seven one, I think, sorry about that, what plans, um, or no, one one. Who added, who added plans or anticipated adding plans? So those are changes in coverage. The third column would be what your renewal would, um, was on six one, so that total there is the five ninety-seven. That fourth column is your additional changes in plans, new. That fourth column is your additional changes in plans, new, new plans, because we do have a, adding a development director in there. And then changes in plans are roughly about seventy thousand. So your health insurance cost is six-sixty-six. We did a six percent increase on July first.
Can you explain to me why then that's not, I added up all of the insurance columns and it came to seven-fourty?
Well, the, so the, the six-sixty-six is health insurance only. Because I think that was a main topic earlier was the health insurance number. So if you added in those other columns, I bet you're probably close to that. Seven-twenty-three, is that what you had, Tim?
I have seven-hundred-and-forty-five, six-nine.
Yep, that's, that's the total request, including health insurance, direct pay, dental insurance and Modern Woodman.
I added up all the grade-out columns.
Yep, yep. And all of those costs are included.
So, I'm confused.
About.
You came up with taking the, the grade A areas. And you had, came up seven-hundred-and-forty, one more time.
Seven-fourty-five, sixty-nine.
Okay. And, and so with the shirt that you headed out, Christina, what's, what's the eighty-e-thousand you ever take difference? Where's that at?
The which difference?
Between Tim's seven-fourty-five and then the six-sixty-six.
Um, actually, when you add up.
There's seventy-five thousand in those three columns in the right.
She only added the first two columns to get to the six-sixty.
Yeah.
You add up all five columns, you get the seven-fourty-five, forty-one.
Okay.
Which is, right. Which is, could be relevant. Okay, I got you. So I guess you have to decide what you want to spend on health insurance.
So why would. How would we go about establishing what we would be willing to spend on health insurance?
Well, we, we attacked about using, you know, figure as an example, um, I don't know what the figure is for twenty-twenty. And then you base, you know, or twenty-twenty-nine, you base it out there. I mean, there's got to be some stake in the ground and you go from there. That's what we did with last, we tried to do that last year with twenty-eighteen.
Okay, then I'm talking apples and oranges with cost of the plan and net spending after deductions.
So we need to agree on that.
Right.
It's hard to set a, a number because all, you know, we had five plan changes, so a number is not really realistic. It's more developing a policy or some.
Um, we need to set a number as a council.
Yeah.
And you may work.
I mean, that's what we talked about doing when the insurance discussion was happening. That we would set a number, whatever we were comfortable with. And it's just like, um, everything else in this budget, right? There's a lot of things that we allocate people with their discretion to spend money on stuff.
So how would, if we said we're willing to spend X?
Correct.
How would we tell, how would the rest of the city have to give that most part up? Wouldn't it make more sense to say, um, right now the employee pays five percent of whatever plan they choose?
They will, yeah.
There's only one plan.
Whichever coverage.
Majority voters to have an old grandfather plan, so it is what it is. We could have gone to choices and then save money and given options, but that's not working. So we're starting with what we have until next June, July. But for budgeting purposes, yes, we can, that's what we talked about was just deciding getting out of all those big, great details.
Health insurance, um, CPI two thousand and nineteen to twenty-twenty is fifteen percent.
That's likely.
Yeah.
I don't think we can take a look at just the benefits by themselves. You have to take a look at wage and benefits because it all kind of plays into that. And, uh, you know, obviously with policemen, probably with some public works people. We don't pay as much as perhaps Seafolks or some of these other areas around here, even some of private industry. We make up with, uh, for some of that, for our, for our benefits. We can't just, I don't think we can stay and look at just insurance and say, well, this is where we're going to go here. We're not even looking at wage side. And, uh, and we keep on visiting this every year and it does put a lot of stress on our, on our employees. And on our, you know, other staff. Because then money ain't just drawn.
Would you be comfortable to say that we're going to approve a number of seven-hundred-and-forty for health insurance? And if the number comes in next year, eight-hundred-and-twenty, we'd say, why not just seven-fourty? If that means.
What I am saying is that it's got to be, it's going to be tighter package. You have to take a look at your health insurance, you have to take a look, look at your wages, look at errors and, uh, you know, you can't just compare wages to wages and then health insurance to health insurance. I mean, it's, it's packed when you're hiring someone.
But we're setting a budget.
We're setting a budget. Well, we are, we are setting a budget, but the reality is, is we've got, we've got people.
Yep.
It's, it's the staff, we've got the benefits here and want, I, I think it's in our interest in, in keeping what we have. So we can't just parse this out and say, okay, this is all we're going to look at instead of, instead of budget here. It's got to be the whole package.
We also have to just make it a point where we do what we feel is right for granted because there isn't going to be an exact match anywhere. I mean, Seafolks police give me five dollars in some percent an hour. More at Seafolks, their health insurance does cost them more, but I believe they get free life insurance. We don't have free life insurance. I need to go back to work all day long. I think we just, we need to decide how.
We can't go back to work all day long. I think the public works, you said the city of police department, you're right, I think the public works, so, you know, brains. So if we can go back and work, we can pick out individual sectors, but it's very difficult in this business to pick out a sector, pick out individual sectors.
Correct.
And that's why we have a wage study.
So, if I said, we have a number for insurance in our budget, a singular number. I mean, that's what we're sort of looking at. I mean, it's no different than our trip whether that requires a snow pile. It's a singular item, we don't look at the whole public works department. So we do have a number. Cool, we can sort of talk about that.
You can say that about anything in the budget. We've got a number. We have a number for, uh, police cars. And we estimate that the police car has been caused forty thousand. All of a sudden Ford comes along and they say, no, those cars afford six thousand this year.
Yes.
And, and what we end up doing is we end up kicking in the extra. I mean, everything is cool.
I know. But we have to have a number to start. Um, cool, we're, cool. This whole thing started with so that we didn't have to sit there and analyze every single plan that comes in and debate what it might be. Just deal with the number. And then all of that can take place outside of. Does that make sense?
So right now, Tim, you're saying we added all up at seven-hundred-and-fourty.
Correct.
That's the number that's in there at the moment.
Correct.
So we have decided that we're willing to advance up to twelve percent.
That's at six. That's at six.
We'll need to double-check those.
Double-check those. We asked about that, that there wasn't any of that changes.
Greg.
Yeah, they really cut our budget last year.
Double-check those. You have to kind of agree that you're, you're doing a wage study. It, it probably should be a weight, a good study. We're going to compare any apples to the apples. We have done that. We still have the rules?
Mm-hmm. And our benefits do make up a considerable contribution to the take-home pay.
Just, it sounds as, as all that is the case. Because I'd like to see, see some of that, okay, for if you do have an.
Mm-hmm.
Some of those perspectives, because if you look at money, they're only, when they're here for their first few years and they're paying seventy-five percent of this twenty-three thousand dollar plan, not much money left. So you talk about drawing a trap with people, entertaining people to stay. It's a pretty tough sales job.
Yeah, how do we, how do we get to that? I mean, we're just, almost every, every, you might have a thirty-day wait period to get onto a plan, but then everybody in that plan pays the same amount. Because, I mean, granted, they might be spouse on there or kids.
This was developed twenty years ago. They're somewhere in there. The city staff forego on wage increases for a number of years. And the seventy-five-fifty, twenty-five is a buy-in for the new employees into the program.
It was designed as employee protection. So what about employee recruit? That's got to be tough to recruit without a lower wage, a real expensive plan.
We're going to get the best of the best.
I can answer as someone who's, I'm paying fifty percent this year. So for me, like last year I was paying seventy-five percent for my wife and my daughter. And I know if I make that sacrifice and do it three years from now, they're going to be covered as long as I'm employed here and I don't have to worry about that. I don't have to worry about where I'm getting their insurance, I have to worry about paying for their insurance. And for me, that was a sacrifice that was well worth it. Because I know, you know, however long, say I, say I worked here for thirty years. My daughter could be covered until she's twenty-six on a really good insurance plan. And it was worth the sacrifice and I have money to go on vacation or anything.
I mean, I'm a member of the.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six total, I think thirty-four on the plan.
I like that one. It just seemed like a steep price. The one that I, I think I was making fifteen dollars on last year. It seems like a steep price. You don't want to get it as a, as your goal.
It's the long-range goal. We're not looking at the change every year, but if we get that back, it's nice.
And I think, I think before we hire these people, they, we, we explain this right up front. This is, this is the plan, this is, this is what you have. And they have the option of saying, that's not for me or y'all take it down. And we've got, you know, we've got good employees. A lot of that when you're hiring a new employee, of course, they're, they're single. All of that. And then the family, the home, the husband, the child, the kids. But there are plans to pay, we hire people that, uh, that have that family and they, they pay that deduction rate.
And it's, it's seventy-five percent of the difference of family coverage, for instance, versus single. City always pays the hundred percent of the employee cost, so it's seventy-five percent of the difference.
It's like sixteen thousand. Some friends said it's sixteen thousand. So it'd be twelve thousand dollars to cover it. Some of our positions started.
Thousand bucks.
Yeah. Some of our positions started.
No, none of our full-time ones are minimum wage.
I know.
No. Yep, we've got salary ranges established for every, every position. Oh, I'd have to look, it's probably. Yeah, I think sixteen, seventeen. Yep. Thank you. Our lowest paid currently, it's about sixteen bucks an hour, sixteen, sixteen. For office staff. Parks department is eighteen-seventy-four. Certified officers, twenty dollars and forty-nine. Maintenance is in that eighteen, nineteen range.
Maybe, maybe I'll be a bad guy, but it just seems to be a hell of a price to pay to give anybody here, or to know starts.
It had, I mean, it has gone up with health insurance going up too. That seventy-five percent has gone up, I mean, it, so over time.
I, I don't know, I, I, I guess I'd be, at least take a look at some of the steps. Play on there, but, good, I get exactly what you're saying. It's a, make the sacrifice early enough. That's, that's a huge sacrifice early enough to, to, to pay them. And I don't think it'd be that costly. So right now, someone that's been here for one quarter, she don't pay it back.
Correct. We'll pay five percent January first. Currently, they don't pay anything.
Well, some, some.
Some do.
Some of us do, because we did compete in the women's challenge. I've been paying five percent of power since they started.
Yep.
I don't want to take too bad of them. They're, they're, I want to be able to keep hell attractive. So I think if there's, you have to be sort of, sort of, out there. So I don't want to put you on the spot on that, but do you mind saying what you spent per month on health insurance?
I don't think, or how much I did.
It's a hundred.
It's about a hundred bucks. It's about a hundred bucks a month for the five percent penalty.
Yeah.
And about, about you, you could be paying.
Correct.
But starting January one, everybody's paying five percent.
Because there's a penalty being that you can always spend. And that kind of spend on carts won't be changed right first, weekly.
So where are we at there?
So the question is, what number do you want to plug into the budget? To create the sign of a system or compensation is going to be more than a budget. If you want to completely change the way we compensate employees, or we've done it with employees, that's like a whole different.
Well, what did we, what did we budget for twenty-four?
I have no idea. I didn't have the numbers.
Uh, twenty-twenty, we have six-hundred-and-thirty, six-thirty-seven, seven-fifty, that's total. That's all the, the health insurance line item in the budget, so that includes health insurance, Modern Woodman, dental, um, and direct pay. Six-thirty-seven, seven-fifty is what I.
So that's another a hundred thousand for this.
But that includes new employees.
Yeah, but there's seventy thousand in coverage changes in one new employee. Yeah, but there's seventy thousand in coverage changes, and one new employee.
If, if you were to compare.